The baddest thing I've ever seen, I believe.
Uh huh.
Hello. Somebody told me it was supposed to look like the one in New York.
Glad we aren't doing it now, ninety degrees. We'll probably start it back.
I've been, I've been to a lot of roundabouts, I've never seen one that looked like that.
Nah, I, I keep trying to give them the benefit of the doubt until such time as they actually complete it.
I'm learning.
That must recovery, haven't you?
Yep, yep, I am too. I'm working on the grading and the paving and the.
Yeah, well, I saw them yesterday. They were supposed to be ready then, back at, I mean, and they were digging.
Yeah.
So.
Well, when they start to boost the, boost the shot, we'll, we'll be back at that.
And we're the folks that have to take the booster.
But, I mean, they hadn't come up with it. Not yet.
They're talking about.
We had a talk with the Lions Club for an hour and a half the other night. The lady that runs the COVID, the Grand Paul Health System, she gave us a lot of information.
Probably will, eventually. I mean, you get a booster.
Well, that's what she said, it's gonna change every year. Take every year.
Oh man. I'll take it. I'll take that. You're not even talking.
We just take it, yeah.
I give nothing much to hug in this ground. That's a reasonable limb.
First yard of the month.
Spend time in there.
Well, uh, let's, I'll handle everybody. Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you tonight to the City of Oxford Board of Commissioners' regular monthly meeting. Today is Tuesday, August tenth, twenty twenty-one. It is seven oh three P M. And we are assembled here in the Commissioners' Boardroom in City Hall. Before I commence, please, uh, remember to turn off or mute any electronic devices that you might have. And I will read the mission of the City of Oxford, which is to serve and improve our community by providing high-quality, affordable services, sound planning for growth and development, and offering the highest possible quality of life while maintaining the public's trust through open communication and ethical standards at all times. And at this time, I would like to invite Reverend Jenny Wilson of Oxford United Methodist Church to open our meeting in prayer for all those who are so inclined. We invite you to join us.
Let us pray. Wise, loving, and gracious God, your scriptures tell us that you are good and you do good. And then they go on to say, teach us. Teach us your statutes, your ways. Indeed, oh Lord, we desire truly to know your ways, especially as we gather here tonight to do the hard work of living and serving together in this community that we love so much. And so we pray, Lord. We pray first that you would ground us in thankfulness for all that is good here in this community. We pray that you would grant us open minds and open hearts, that you would guide us to speak and to listen with care and respect. And Lord, that you would give us your vision, a vision of how all that is good here can be even better when we work together. For indeed, Lord, you are good and you do good. So may we. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Reverend Wilson. And at this time, I would invite Commissioner Danny Curran to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Please stand and take the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Curran. At this time, we will consider adjustments to and approval of the agenda. We have received word that we do need to remove item four A, which is to consider adopting a resolution for a tentative award of bid for the twenty eighteen D W I sewer main project. Because I gather we are still awaiting some information on that.
That is correct.
Okay. So, any questions there, colleagues? Okay, then, um, are there any other adjustments to the agenda that anyone would like to make at this time? Okay, excellent.
Motion to approve the agenda with the mission of four A.
Okay, thank you very much. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signal show by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? The agenda stands adopted as adjusted. In order to provide for the highest standards of behavior and transparency in governance, our board has approved a code of ethics to establish guidelines for ethical standards for board members and to provide guidance in determining appropriate conduct. Among those, that we should avoid impropriety in the exercise of our official duties and should conduct the affairs of the board in an open and public manner. I now inquire whether any board member knows of any conflict of interest or appearance of such. We'd respect any matters before the board. If you do know of a conflict of interest or appearance of such, please state so at this time. Let the record note, no conflicts. And at this time, do we have Jorge and Maria Castillo in the audience of two hundred King Street? Jorge and Maria Castillo for presentation of Yard of the Month. Okay, we do not. But with that, I would invite everyone to go by two hundred King Street and check out the beautiful yard with the beautiful roses and plantings around the trees in the front yard at two hundred King Street, the property of Jorge and Maria Castillo. In recognition of their valuable contribution towards the beauty of our community and in absentia, please let us give them a round of applause. And with that, as many of you know, our intrepid Chief Al Coley retired effective the beginning of this month. And it is standard practice to award a retiring officer their shield and their sidearm. I, I am the worst for seeing people, but do we have Chief Coley in the audience with us tonight? We do not. Okay, so I would like to just say, to read, uh, what the, what our ordinance says. It is the firearm policy for retiring officers or officers killed in the line of duty. And the purpose of the policy is to establish a procedure for awarding service weapons and badges to retiring police officers or to the survivors thereof killed in the line of duty. Upon retirement of a full-time police officer who has served as a police officer for the city and upon written request by the retiring officer made within thirty days of the effective retirement date, the city may pursuant to general statute, paragraph twenty dash one eighty-seven dot two, award the retiring officer their service sidearm, badge, and credentials. This shall be done at no cost to the retiring officer. And the retiring officer must comply with the requirements to secure a permit for the sidearm pursuant to general statute fourteen dash four oh two or by having the sidearm rendered incapable of being fired. And upon retirement, as set forth herein, an officer will be awarded their duty badge and photo identification issued by the police department, both of which shall be staffed retired. And as we know, uh, Chief Coley served the City of Oxford for eight years. And he carried us through some tumultuous times last year. And he made many, many connections throughout the community. And we appreciate his service. We wish him the best in his retirement and with his journey thereafter with his family. And I would like to ask you all to please give him a round of applause. Would anyone like to add any comments to that? Okay, we will carry on. At this time, I would like to invite Officer Allen and Sergeant Coghill and Lieutenant Stockwell to come forward so we can have a presentation of receiving the life-saving award for their action in November twenty twenty.
I have a cold.
I'm not going to shake a cold.
Okay. So this was a very exciting question. We need to read the notes of this. And I want to thank you both ahead of time for your service. On November twenty eighth, twenty twenty, Oxford Police Department officers were dispatched to the area of Alexander Plaza near Body Works and Double A Storage in reference to the suspicious behavior of a man in the area. Officer Allen was first to arrive on the scene, attempting to talk to the subject and to evaluate the situation. The subject refused Officer Allen's request to talk to him. And Officer, as Officer Allen began to approach the subject to talk with him, the subject pulled a broken bottle and held it to his neck as he walked towards Officer Allen. Officer Allen retreated to his vehicle, drew his weapon, and gave the subject commands to drop the bottle. Subject stopped advancing, and Officer Allen began to talk with him, attempting to de-escalate the situation, telling him, please don't do this. You have more to live for. Just talk to him. Sergeant Coghill then arrived on the scene. Sergeant Coghill took over the conversation with the subject while Officer Allen maintained lethal cover. They determined that the subject was from out of town, dropped off in Oxford, and had previous mental health issues. He was going through a lot of personal problems and his emotional state was unstable. The subject stated repeatedly that he was tired of life and would rather die. He made several comments that he hoped the police would shoot him. Sergeant Coghill and Officer Allen talked to the subject for over thirty-five minutes at the parking lot. Occasionally, the subject tried to walk away from the officers, but they were able to reposition themselves to contain him and continue to talk to him. Throughout the entire interaction, the subject continued to hold the broken bottle to his neck and wrist, breaking the skin in both areas. As time passed, it became clear that the subject was not likely to comply with the officer's commands. He became more agitated and tried to walk away from the officers. Believing that the subject would potentially flee and harm himself, Sergeant Coghill seized an opportunity to use a less legal force option, the X twenty-six taser, to incapacitate the subject. Officer Allen and Officer Parrott, another officer who arrived on the scene but is no longer with the Oxford Police Department, were able to separate the subject from the broken bottle and secure him in handcuffs after one five-second cycle of the taser, causing minimal injury to the subject. Sergeant Coghill then put out involuntary commitment papers, and the subject was taken to Grand Paul Medical Center for mental health evaluation. Our command staff believes that the actions of these officers that day saved the life of the subject who was experiencing a severe mental health crisis and was seriously cosmetizing, taking his own life or potentially committing suicide by pop. The subject was taken into custody with minimal injury and provided the appropriate mental health treatment. Pursuant to Oxford Police Department General Order twelve dash zero two one, Police Awards Program, Section four C, our command staff has chosen to honor the actions of Officer Allen and Sergeant Coghill by awarding them our life-saving award. And with that, our Board of Commissioners and staff salute each of you for your commitment and service to our community and your efforts to keep every member safe. Please give these guys a shout-out. In these times, when there's so much negative flying around, it is such an honor to be able to give you all a shout-out.
Yes.
We know that everybody in our police force deserves a shout-out because every day they go out and they give their best, and it's all famous now. This is particular. It's a great opportunity. We appreciate you for that. Thank you.
Just want to take a minute to thank the board for the opportunity to recognize the officers today. As Mayor Sergeant said, we're presenting the life-saving awards. Police Department is signified by a uniform ribbon, a red and white. It's, uh, if you worn out the uniform, we have several of these things and ribbons. Signifying different things, field training officer, SWAT trained officer, dedication officer. They all hold a different, you know, pride level. But this is definitely one of the higher honors for this department. And it's, uh, it's a privilege to be able to honor them because ultimately, preservation of life is the number one priority. So we want to recognize the members of the band today. And we're going to present both of them with this uniform being, a ribbon that you can wear, a pride of yours.
At this time, Planning Director Cheryl Hart is available to ask, answer questions regarding the Community Development Block Grant, Coronavirus Grant. See, board members received a little update from her in your agenda packet. Do you have any questions for her at this time? Okay. Excuse me? Yes, Commissioner Gilby?
I, um, I was just wondering if we've had any feedback from the community as, or, or do you have any conclusions that you can draw from the lack of use of these funds or?
Well, we only received clearance to start spending the money at the end of June. So we've only had two months. And we have the National Program, the North Carolina Hope Program going on. But, um, it is working. People are coming back and getting advocate. To further assist.
So you do, you do expect the, the money to be utilized within the community?
Well, it's there, um, and we're trying to let people know about it. We have until twenty-three to spend those funds, so we have a little time there.
And it is only within the city limits of Oxford?
That is correct.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Okay, any further questions from any other members of the board? Thank you very much, Ms. Hart.
Thank you.
And with this, we will move forward to, uh, our public comment period during which people are allowed, invited to speak to the board regarding matters on the agenda or non-agenda items. There is a five-minute limit, but, so we will first invite, uh, Reverend Ronnie Morton to come forward to speak. We have got, well, actually, I should say Treasures of Joy Hope House. I'm not sure who is going to come speak to that issue, but we invite you to the podium and identify yourself and the address. And we look forward to hearing from you.
Do we have to wear a mask while we're speaking? Do these have to stay on me?
No, you, you do not have to wear a mask. I am wearing a mask because I have a cold.
I cannot breathe. Um, I'm Carrie Curran. I am here to help represent the Hope House along with.
Can you speak?
I am Carrie Curran. I am here to help represent the Hope House. We are, um, along with my husband, we are APC Construction. And we were hired to build this establishment. Also with me is?
I am Attorney Michael Carpenter. I am the board attorney for the Treasures of Joy Corporation.
My name is A P Curran. I'm a joint contractor for APC Construction, hired to complete the Hope House.
The reason why we're here today is we just need clarification more than anything. We are ready to move people into the Hope House. The Hope House, as far as construction goes, is finished and has been finished. But we are now at a position where we need to know what it is that the city wants us to comply with for the driveway. We've done a lot of research. We've tried to find what it is that we're supposed to be doing. Cheryl has been incredibly helpful and has told us what, I guess, what the city would like to see done. But we haven't been able to see it in writing yet. And we were just hoping that tonight, somebody could provide to us or for us exactly where the Hope House falls and what we're complying with.
Uh, we were, uh, our architect classified this building as an R three residential. In the, I'm familiar with North Carolina building codes. I understand that we have to provide accessibility for the public and for ADA requirements, handicap as well. I'm familiar with all those codes and how to comply with them. We have done that. We actually poured the pad today for the van-accessible handicap parking and the ramp to access the building. But we have yet to be able to come up with where driveways fall into this. It's a separate issue, I guess, between zoning and the state. Those two are not the same. And that's where the confusion is. We just like to know what section and article we fall under and how we can find that. We were not able to find it online and have not been able to view those documents.
I guess if I could just briefly speak from the board's position. As the board, we, um, have members that are ready to move into this building. They have been ready for about a month now. And we're kind of coming from the same position. We want to comply with all zoning and code regulations. We just kind of want some clarity on what it is we need to do because we are ready to move individuals into the Hope House. And I think if we can get some clarity on this issue, hopefully that can clear it up because we are, we're ready to start moving people in.
Okay. Reverend Morton, are you okay?
I'm Pastor Ronnie Morton, and I'm broke. No, I'm just kidding. I am broke today. I thought I'd lighten your luck a little bit, but really, we are. It was just a little confusion. We started this together. Let's finish it together. Cheryl and I sit down and we came up with this years ago, the Transitional House. And we don't want it to be held up because, uh, gravel. We just need, hopefully, an extension if we have to pave the whole parking lot, some time to. We were able to bring the whole community together. Some of you all here, everybody really has contributed money, time. And they said we couldn't do it, but we've done it together. And you know the devil was not going to like that when we worked together. So I'm asking you all to, um, as you hear our builders say, that they have already, uh, we've put the pad in for the accessibility for the handicap and all of that. Just give us a little time to come together. In future terms, they'll learn, they'll know what we need to do so that we don't make this mistake because our intention is to build a village. Our intention is to make Orange Street the Hillsborough Street of Oxford. It can be done. But give me a little time, raise some money. I'm poor, broke now.
Can I?
Yes, Commissioner Tobe.
Can I just ask a couple of questions? I, I understand that when the plans first went ahead and after you started building, you couldn't find this particular statue. And neither could I until today. We found it, thanks to Cheryl. We did find it. It was passed in two thousand and eight or something. But if you couldn't find it and we couldn't find it, then all I would ask is that we give them a little bit of leeway, maybe, so allow the people to move in and delay it, delay the padding until they can get some finances together. I mean, this house, as far as I'm concerned, is much needed, is much wanted. And a mistake about not finding the right ordinance that covered it. I mean, you covered everything that you could find, right? I think everybody agrees with that. They just couldn't find this particular ordinance until today. So why can't we just, um, allow them a little bit more time? Let them move in and allow them more time to use this and get some money together so they can get this driveway down.
So to clarify for the record, you knew that you were required to put in a driveway and parking spaces, but you did not know that you were required to pave?
That's correct.
The driveway?
We knew that according to our special use permit from twenty seventeen, that we were to provide adequate.
I need to ask you to speak up.
We knew that in twenty seventeen with our special use permit that we had to provide adequate parking for staff. It was never explained to us at that point what that meant. At the time in which we first applied, we had one lot. Over the course of time, it became two lots. That then became one large lot and budgets tight. So to try to save where we could, we provided a gravel access and parking. I'm not sure how many of you are familiar with the impervious surface, but gravel is ultimately your best bet because there's water runoff, right? So we were trying to comply with what we knew from our special use permit. And we continued to research what we needed to be doing online. And apparently, the city ordinance is online from two thousand and three. So anyway, we were not successful. So then we decided to speak to Ms. Hart, and she was telling us what she, she said we needed to comply with, but we just kept wanting to see it. Like, just show us, because to, still, right now, we're not sure where we fall. You know, we thought that transitional housing was added to the ordinances. But I don't know. Does anybody know if it was ever added, section seven fifty-seven? But either way, what was provided for us today is the first time we've seen it. And it states that all new dwelling units have to have a paved driveway of asphalt or concrete. And then it goes on to state that it was recognized that there are opportunities to look at other surfaces. But it does note that that excludes gravel. However, it's murky in the sense that it seems like you could do something other than gravel, other than concrete, other than asphalt.
There are, there are concrete block-type things that, that can be inset in the earth.
Runners.
Provide a level surface but allow for more pervious surface. And there are, there are also other types of, um, covering that are not gravel but allow for permeability. And I think that's, that's what the, the amendment, yes, Commissioner Tobe?
I was just going to say, I, I remember, I was on the, I still am, the zoning board of adjustment when you first applied for this, which was four years ago, I believe. And I, you know, I'm trying to rack my brains from four years ago, but I do remember I asked a question about parking and would there be overnight people there, you know, living there? So I did ask about that, and I don't remember anything about asphalt or cement or concrete. It was just parking. So this has just been, um, an oversight of sorts. It's nobody's fault. It's just been an oversight. But that's why I would just say if we could possibly help them out, let's get this place open. Let's get it operating if needed. And, um, within a certain time period, have that driveway parking area done. I think we've done it before. I think we have done it before with, um, I think we have done it before with, um, the animal hospital, I believe.
Oh, really?
Yeah. They, they couldn't afford the driveway or the parking area, so we allowed them to open. And they, we paid them 12 months or something.
I don't recall that.
Yes.
I don't think they'd fall under the same thing.
No?
I don't think they would. I'm, I'm, I'm-
You remember?
I'm very much in favor of allowing, whatever we need to do, allowing them to open.
Yeah.
But I don't think the animal hospital would be in the same...
I, I just-
Hang on, Commissioner Bridges is waving his hand.
Yeah, I was just wondering what the rationale for the ordinance was. I mean, why, you know, why the requirement?
I was on the planning board and we, we passed that in 2008. Basically to provide, I guess, better, it would, it would look better.
I actually- I remember that Mark Dunham was the city manager and there had been, I just, I wasn't on the board. I just happened to be at the meeting that night. And there had been complaints about gravel coming out of some people's driveways and causing trip hazards on the sidewalks. And so this was the suggested approach. This was the suggested approach. I remember also thinking we could address this approach. I have a gravel driveway and I like my gravel driveway. It would require residents to keep the sidewalks free of debris.
Right.
And, and, uh, anything. But, but that was, as I recall, that was, uh, the city manager's presentation.
And now, it's not a big issue because most of your construction now is in subdivisions. They have HOAs and they require it. But, I mean, I agree with Mr. Tovey. If we could give them six months, 12 months, whatever they need.
To get some money together.
I'd hate to see the place sit there and not be able to open for the next 12 months because-
Women that stay there are not going to have no cause.
Is due, is there?
Is 12 months long enough?
Can I put that as a motion?
Is that 12 months?
As long as you do so with the understanding-
That it's a one-off.
-with Hope House here tonight representing that development, that they agree to that, that you have it in writing. I, I hate to be the naysayer in all of this, but I've seen these happen before. That once you allow it temporarily, whatever, it has a tendency to not ever get done.
And somebody else will come with the same problem.
Exactly. And all you're doing is starting that slippery slope. And the next one to want the same thing.
I don't want to be, I think it'd be plain and simple. I mean, um, in the, in the ordinances from now on.
The slippery slope is eliminated by the fact that we do, that this was an amendment made to an ordinance and for whatever reason, the amendment was not readily accessible to people that were looking for it. We have a new UDO that has since been passed that would apply to all new construction. And we would have an expectation that any builder, anybody would be able to double check what's in the new UDO and would be able to find the, the rule that applies to it. Commissioner Gilreath?
I'm just curious if this facility is licensed with DHHS. And what, what does their reg say about facilities providing this level of care to someone?
What was that?
Can you repeat that, please, Commissioner?
I was wondering if the facility was licensed with DHHS or Division of Health and Human Services based upon the type of clients that you're providing services for. What does it say about the different facilities and, and, and... Because they're very specific about who you're serving and the type of facility that you're providing that level of care in. Um, and, and even the surroundings and what you can and cannot do and, I mean, down to square feet and the whole nine yards. Um, that was my background and I'm just curious, how, how are you licensed?
A transitional housing.
This is your show.
Transitional housing is not permanent, it's not a permanent housing. Our goal is to reach that, working with DHHS. We're not dealing with people who are coming, who have substance abuse problems. We're dealing with people who have recovered, folk who have come out of Trosa, uh, who have 10, 12 years clinging or four or five years clinging, have not nowhere to stay. People who might come out of re-injury programs, who have been to jail for minor offenses such as marijuana, things of that nature. They are there to, to, to stay 12 months, uh, no longer than 18 months. Our goal is to reconnect them with their family and get them housing. So as we move forward, DHHS would be more involved if we're going to, uh, work with people who are coming for drug addiction, uh, medication. We are not going to be dealing with that.
I mean, and that's what I was asking, because I want the board to find themselves in conflict with us saying one thing and then you have another set of regulations that we're not even aware that you need to be complying with.
Before we, uh-
I mean, so-
Cheryl and I, before we decided to do this, we checked on all of that. What we could, in the city, what would be allowed in the city before we moved forward. So we fall under those guidelines. Because we are not a clinic, we are not a facility where we house drug offenders. We're, it's kind of like a reward for people who are, have come out but have no family or have nowhere to stay. And we want to try to connect them back to their families and get them back in the community.
This is a City of Oxford issue, paved driveway, that's all.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Yep. And we do have, Commissioner Tovey said he made it in the form of a motion.
A motion.
Do you want us... Oh, I'm sorry, did somebody down here want to re-approach?
I have a suggestion. Since it seems to be a consensus over the board that everyone wants this to happen, I don't think we even need a motion. There's something that the manager can handle, that it's his job now for him to write the, you know-
The letter.
Thank you. The documentation that everyone is requesting, the attorney is aware of it. We have done this. It was, it was something with the animal hospital, I can't remember that exactly, but it was something about the park. So it has been done before, but I do agree with the manager. Put it in writing and let's just get it done.
And you would agree to that?
Absolutely.
We just want to comply.
Do we have a, can we establish a time?
We've got a motion to sign the agreement.
I, I think we could finish the motion and the manager can still do it.
Right.
Write a letter.
Okay. So, but would you like to specify a length of time? Do we need to hear from?
12 months.
Uh, the, you were saying 12 months?
12 months. I think 12 months would be in-
Can you, can you manage 12 months?
I can bend real hard if I want to.
Okay. Then, uh, and then with the addition of Mayor Protem suggested that it be moved straight to the manager to work out the details. Any further discussion on Commissioner Tovey's motion? Then all in favor of the motion, signal show by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries 620. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And we appreciate the good work that you're trying to do. We appreciate equally the good work of our staff-
Yeah.
-that are trying to make sure that everybody is compliant with, uh, the rules-
Absolutely, yeah.
-that the city has established.
I think it's just a superload of things.
At this time, I would like to write, invite William Amerson Jr. of 512 Harris Street to come forward to speak on the topic of speeding. And again, for the record, if you would identify your name and your address. And then, as you have heard, you have five minutes.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
No.
No.
No. Okay. Here, I'll get closer then, okay?
We hope you can get in that gate.
All right. William Charles Amerson Jr., 512 Harris Street here in Oxford. And just for clarification, I'm at the corner of Harris and Quail Ridge. Okay? Yes. I've been here, uh, five and a half years. Uh, we moved up from Durham. Uh, we were here last month, accepting the yard of the month. And we appreciate that, Mayor, thank you very much, and counsel. In five and a half years, I've made three personal visits to the police station. It's my personal, um, thing that you do these things in face to face. I'm not one that likes to send letters or send emails or anything of that nature. I like to conduct my business, especially personal business, face to face. So, um, I've been over to the police station three times in a five and a half year period to, um, address speeding in the neighborhood. The first time, um, extremely memorable visit. The receptionist greeted me and wanted to know my business. And I told her why I was there. And she asked where I was and I explained Quail Ridge. And she politely told me how there was no way anyone could do more than 35 miles an hour on Quail Ridge Road because of that little S turn from, um, up there around Alexander all the way over to, uh, North Country Club. And, uh, I assured her that I might not have a radar gun, but I sure know more than 35 miles an hour when I hear it and see it out there. And, um, after the third visit to the police department, and I'm sorry, Chief, I, I keep looking at you, but I, I know you're the only one in the room. And I, again, as a matter of courtesy, I'm trying to address you directly so that you know where it's coming from. After my third visit, and I, I'm sorry that Lieutenant Stockholm left, left already, but I, I appreciate the fact that y'all have a business to do here in, in the City of Oxford. And, and, um, you've got, um, staffing that you need to take care of and whatnot. But, uh, my third visit was with the lieutenant. And, uh, we stood out in the, in the area there and we talked, chatted for a while and got down to some real business about, you know, the one thing that you really don't want to be doing is having to turn your neighbors in when they can't comply with the law. And I, I had a real, real conflict with that about having to make a trip over to the police station for the third time in five years. Well, that was within four at the time. And, and state my business that I'm greatly disappointed in my neighbors and that the only way that I feel that this problem is going to get addressed is that we need to get our police department involved. So we chatted for quite a while. And, uh, they brought out their Speed-O-Matic machine. I'm sure all of you have seen them around town. They've been on North Country Club and they've been over on Cherry and Sunset. They've been over on Quail Ridge and, um, you know, you, you see them around town. And, you know, I got to thinking about this after the last time I was here last month. Basically, that's an extremely passive agreement that the city has with its residents about, we want to show you what you're doing and we hope that you're responsible enough as citizens and residents to respect the law and slow down. Well, I'm here to tell you, after personally witnessing 48 and 49 miles per hour out there on Quail Ridge, which you don't have to really, you know, look at these Speed-O-Matic signs to see it, but you hear a car winding out and you see it flying down Quail Ridge and you lean over outside your yard and you're looking at that Speed-O-Matic sign and you go, well, I won't say what you said when you see those numbers show up. And I only saw 48, 49. My neighbors witnessed 58 and 59 miles per hour on Quail Ridge, a road that you can't get beyond 35. So I will wrap this up. I've, I've got the sign from the mayor. Yes, ma'am. I'll try and be nice. I'll wrap this up. All right. Here's your wrap-up. We need to move from passive measures to more active measures. People can't be responsible to control their speed on their own. We need blue lights, we need cruisers, we need tickets written in this town so that people start getting the message. Because I tell you what, I hate walking my dogs out there. I hate walking in my own neighborhood because you can't control the speeders. And that's 25 on Harris Street. So this guy comes flying up Friday. This is just this past Friday, I know. I'm beyond my limit. Thank you, Mayor. I'm beyond my limit. I'm going to make one last point and then I'm going to step down. Because this, this one really drove it home for me for why I'm here tonight. He comes flying down Harris Street. Now, there's a stop sign at every intersection on Harris Street. So it's kind of hard to get beyond 25. But with that truck that he was driving and the way he was revving that thing out, I knew he was doing more than 25. And I pulled my dog in, Oliver, and I put him in a hold position and I shook my head. Well, he passed me and he stopped. And then he backs up and he rolls down the window and he shouts across the 12 or 13-year-olds sitting in the passenger seat at me. What? He says, what? I said, speed limit through here is 25. I wasn't doing more than 25 and then he told me to F off as he pulled up Harris Street. So there's your respect for your law and why I'm here tonight making a passionate plea. Because when I go down Forest Street and I see where the neighbors have tried to take it into their own hands by putting up slow down signs and do not litter signs, it tells me we got a problem here in Oxford. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your patience. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Amerson. We've had a number of complaints about speeding throughout town. We've had a number of requests for speed bumps. We know that, that it's not generally, um, considered to be advisable for our emergency vehicles. Can we have some recommendations? Because certainly Quail Ridge, I've had a number of complaints about speeding on Raleigh Street. I think Commissioner Fields, I feel like I remember you getting some complaints about speeding. Can, can we consider rumble strips? I don't know, something. Can we get some, yes, sir?
I would like, uh, Chief Ford, can you kind of update us on what your department is currently doing in regards to speeding, please, before I talk about what staff is working on currently?
Yes, sir. We have our speed measuring devices deployed in several different locations. We do try and rotate them. We like to capture at least a week worth of data so we can gauge if there's a certain time that we need to give extra attention. Certainly, those two times are going to be morning when people are on their way to work and afternoon when people are on their way home or what. Of course, we always direct our officers to take the appropriate, um, action, whether that be a written citation or a written warning. We leave that discretion up to the officer. But I'm sure everyone knows that no one ever speeds when they see it. It's kind of what we call the twenty. But we, we, we officers every day and we're supposed to run radar and check the speeders and talk all the business. But, Mr. Amerson, um, you and I can talk a little bit more.
Absolutely.
Okay?
Thank you, Chief. I'll also add that it's my understanding that, uh, OPD officer has just recently graduated from radar school. So they can now use that, or that individual can, uh, is certified to use the more sophisticated radar that, that we have. And we hate to tell everybody about that. But I believe I saw it being utilized last night as I was out walking. The police were out there doing what you would hope that they would be doing. But, um, as you've seen from the last couple of months, you know, we've had people from Raleigh Street. Now, this is the other side of town. Don't you, I sit on my porch and I see them too. So, you know, it's, it's not just one area. It's, it's problematic, not just in Oxford, but everywhere I have certainly been in my 29-year career. And I've worked all over the state. In addition to what the police department is doing, um, city staff is attempting to take the bull by the horns a little bit and develop a traffic calming policy for the public safety- the bull by the horns a little bit and develop a traffic calming policy for the Public Safety Committee to consider just as soon as we complete it. We're getting close to completing that draft, that first draft, and we'll be requesting that the Public Safety Committee gather here in fairly short order to review that potential traffic calming policy for its utilization here in Oxford.
Excellent. And I ask you and our interim chief, is it possible, if they're out with their new radar skills, to have them in an unmarked car so we can get a more realistic assay of the speeds that people are driving?
I think the, Mr. Ford, you are speaking of the Lido or the handheld device. That device is actually used outside of the vehicle.
Okay.
So, the officer can stand in random locations. I think we purchased the last year through the governor's highway safety program. And obviously, during my semi-retirement, we actually had officers trained. Thank you for letting me know it's been deployed. But, yeah, that is used, and you can put an officer out of a vehicle anywhere, and they can use that instrument to measure.
Right.
My understanding of it is that its range is also extended versus traditional radar, so it's helpful that you can actually potentially capture their speed before they see you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Can I ask the chief?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask the chief a question? How many officers, Chief, do you envisage training to use this radar?
Right now, I believe it's only two that have been certified to use this particular measuring device, and one is actually Sergeant Cottier, and I believe the other is Sergeant Marie. We're in hopes that, we collect points every year through the governor's highway safety program. When we were able to force a return, return in cash, and we're able to buy these type of devices. But we would like to have at least one officer available.
Of course, the problem with that, I see, is that you send an officer away for training, and it's an officer off the street, right?
That's true.
So, it swings and roundabouts. I won't mention the roundabout.
Commissioner Kern.
Actually, I had on my list of commissioner comments, I've been approached by some, a few people on Spring Street about putting the all-way stop on Spring Street in military. So, could you look at that area also?
The stop sign is Spring and military?
Spring and Spring and Spring and military. It's all the way.
Along and that other, because it drops to twenty-five when you get to the top of the deal.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other comments on this subject? Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Emerson. At this time, I will invite Ed Finley to come forward, please. Will you come to the podium, state your name, your address, and the topic that you would like to discuss? And you have five minutes.
Hi, I'm Ed Finley with APG Capital. Address is 1201 Edwards Mill Road, Suite 300, Raleigh and C.
What was that capital?
I'm sorry. APG Capital.
Okay, thank you.
We submitted a rezoning request on June 28th, and a annexation request on July 22nd, and for a piece of property off Landis Road. And we are here tonight to make two requests. First, we'd like to request that the clerk certify the sufficiency of our annexation request. And second, that we push the public hearing for our rezoning to the October meeting so that both matters can be discussed at the same time.
Okay.
And I have with me Pat Barbeau from Timmons. He is our engineering contact on this project as well.
Okay. So, are, would you like him to speak before we comment, or would you like?
I don't think we need it.
Okay. So, I believe with the, it's an item on tonight's agenda to consider that we will, the board will vote on asking the clerk to investigate the petition of sufficiency, but she has to do that first, so she can't kind of do it immediately. It has.
Okay. So, I didn't see the agenda, so I'm sorry about that.
Okay. That's okay. Not a problem. We appreciate all questions and comments during public comment. So, that is on the agenda, and.
Understood.
And then, with respect to moving the public hearing from September to October, Ms.
It's all written on schedule, except for.
I'm sorry, I'm having the worst time hearing.
He's asking for something that we are gonna do, is on the agenda, and that's what we're gonna do, so he's asking for what we already have.
Okay. Perfect. I thought it was for September.
September.
I did, too.
It was for September.
It was for September.
And he's asking for it to be moved to October.
That's fine, so we can.
That's not a problem.
Okay. There you go. Excellent. So, I guess that means that we do not have, need to hear from Patrick Barbeau. If you wanna, you wanna take a minute and hear background since he's here?
Yeah. My name is, my name is Patrick Barbeau. I'm a senior project manager at the Timmons Group in Raleigh. Address is 5410 Trinity Road, Raleigh. So, as Ed referenced, we're looking at rezoning, doing a zoning map amendment for a seventy-six point-three acre project. It's, it doesn't have an address, it's, but it's located kind of the intersection of Oxford Road and Landis. Kind of, those roads kind of bisect the parcel into three different pieces that add up to seventy-six acres. Part of the property is in with Oxford ETJ and parts in the county, Granville County. What we'd like to do is, what we're requesting to do for the public hearing in October is to rezone the property to GR10, which is General Residential 10, which will allow ten units per acre for the site. What the developer's interested in doing is doing a mix of townhomes, maybe single-family, maybe some apartments of the demographics call for that. It does a lot of research for the housing demand for Oxford that the developer has to do. But GR10 kind of gives us, gives us a lot of leeway in what we could put on the property. It would be residential, but it would allow a mix of residential. As you may or may not know, Oxford Road is in a highway overlay district. It's obviously thoroughfare, seems to be a good fit for a mixed-use residential community. The highway overlay district in that area has a two-hundred-foot buffer on either side of Oxford Road, so the residential development would be well buffered visually from Oxford Road. So, did you have any particular questions on that, or are we kind of just postpone till October hearing?
So, no questions from this end? Any questions from either of you? So, we will not, we will not have any sense of how many apartments, or how many single-family homes, or how many townhomes before the board is asked to vote on the.
And what it is, there's a couple of different rezoning processes through Oxford. What we're doing is just changing the color on the zoning map. We would still have to come back through review. The other process is a PUD, plan unit development, that's reshow the lots, the roads, the density, the residential density of apartments, townhomes, whatever it is. That would be, that would be another process we're gonna have to go through, even though we rezone the property, that's, we'd still have to come back to the council for review of that.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions from any members of the board? Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
With that, we move forward to item four, which is city business. We have eliminated item A, so we move forward to item B, which is to consider contiguous annexation requests by LGI Homes of Raleigh, North Carolina, of one hundred and twenty-nine point-nine plus or minus acres located off Highway ninety-six South, which is adjacent to the Rollingwood subdivision. It allows city clerk to investigate the sufficiency of the petition and certify the sufficiency of requests to annex the property. Receiving the petition for annexation is the first step for annexing the property. The applicant has gone through the appropriate steps for having the property rezoned and annexed. This is the final step in order to develop the property. Recommended action is that staff recommends authorizing the city clerk to investigate the sufficiency of the petition and certifying its sufficiency. And you have supporting information in attachment four D. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bridges. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all in favor, the motion signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Item C, consider a non-contiguous annexation request on behalf of CAB LLC for seventy-six point-eight-seven acres located off the outer loop of Landis Road by authorizing the city clerk to investigate the petition's sufficiency. This is the item which was just discussed during the public comment. The petitioner is going through the process of having the property rezoned for high-density residential development, GR10, up to ten dwelling units per acre. Currently, thirty-seven point-seven acres fall within the city of Oxford ETJ, and the remaining falls in Granville County's jurisdiction. Therefore, the petitioner will be seeking water and sewer for the property. You have support information in attachment four C. And if you'll recall, at your places was a revised cover sheet staff report for attachment four C. The recommended action is that staff recommends authorizing the city clerk to investigate the sufficiency of the petition and certifying its sufficiency. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tovey. Any discussion? All in favor, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries unanimously. Item D is to consider calling for a public hearing for the regular board meeting, and here, it is listed as September fourteenth, so we have just been requested to make that public hearing. Give me a moment. The October, the date of the October board meeting is October twelfth. So, it would be for October twelfth for a request to rezone thirty-seven point-seven acres from residential agriculture, which is one dwelling unit per acre, to GR10, which is general residential, up to ten dwelling units per acre, which is moderate to high-density residential development. APG Capital, who we've just heard from, that was Ed Finley, is seeking to develop a total of seventy-six point-eight-seven acres. Out of the seventy-six point-eight-seven acres, only thirty-seven point-seven plus or minus is within the city of Oxford's jurisdiction. Therefore, the applicant requests to annex seventy-six point-eight-seven acres into the city with a zoning classification for the remaining thirty-nine point-one acres being assigned a zoning classification if annexed to the city. And you have support information in attachment four D. The recommended action is to call for a public hearing. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Fields. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all in favor, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. I do have some questions when we get to that point for the manager and Ms. Hart, because this is such a drastic change in density. I'm hoping that maybe we can have a presentation for the board at the meeting clarifying the impact, maybe helpful, like was just raised, it looks like it's gonna be a mixed-use development because it would appear that if you did ten homes on an acre, lot sizes are forty-two by a hundred and five feet, which is pretty tight, and by the same token, at Oxford Park, I know there's a variety of lot sizes up there, some very tight and some larger. So, maybe if we could have some comparisons with existing developments that we know, so the board can kind of understand the impact and as well as see it in the map and the properties that surround, so that we can understand completely the buffers, and like he alluded to, the buffer with the road, but the buffer with the other properties. And so, is that, is that something that would be possible?
I don't see why not.
Okay. Excellent. I think, I think it would help us, this is most likely not going to be the last decision with respect to change in zoning, and I think this board and subsequent boards are gonna have to do a lot of, put a lot of thought into how we develop. I know we are all excited about the prospect of growth and development for Oxford, and at the same time, we want to do it in such a way that everybody in thirty years looks back and says, "Boy, they nailed it." They did it right. So, thank you. With that, moving to item E, consider approving a grant project ordinance to establish a special revenue fund to account for monies the city will receive from the United States Treasury as part of the American Rescue Plan Act. The city of Oxford has been awarded two million eight hundred and thirty-one thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty cents from the United States Treasury as part of the American Rescue Plan Act. These funds are to be used to pay for qualified expenses as stated in the ARP Fund's expenditure requirements, and expended by December thirty-first of 2024. The local government commission has strongly recommended that a separate special revenue fund and a project ordinance be used to show proper accountability of the funds. The city of Oxford will receive the money from the state treasury in two payments, in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, and fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. The city has received the first deposit on July sixteenth in the amount of one million four hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-five cents. The second deposit will be in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, and you have support information in attachment four E. Recommended action is that staff recommends that the board approve a grant project ordinance to establish a special revenue fund to account for the monies the city will receive from the United States Treasury as part of the American Rescue Plan Act. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tovey. Any discussion? All in favor, the motion signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. I know we all look forward to fruitful discussions on how we might wisely use this money. Item five is the consent agenda, which includes the July finance report by our finance director and July agenda and regular meeting minutes. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to accept the consent agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Kern. Any discussion? All in favor, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion stands adopted. And with that, we come to the end of our show tonight. Let's remember that we have, and I will give those comments, this Friday, six to eight thirty PM, is Music on Main featuring retro bands. They're out of Alamance County. They are awesome. They can make the place rock. We've had them a couple of times come for the Boys and Girls Club Mardi Gras Bash, so please come out and listen to the retro band. I don't think you'll be disappointed. And August twenty-first to the, September twenty-fifth is the hot sauce window contest, and Friday, September third, first Friday of September, five thirty to eight PM, is the Cruisin' to Oxford. And with that, I'm gonna start on this end. Commissioner Fields, do you have anything you would like to add?
No, not tonight, thank you.
Mayor Proton.
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Kern.
Yes, ma'am. When we passed the Doll of Trevor ordinance, I had planned to bring this up. It was about the same time they had trouble with the venomous snake in Raleigh. I feel like that's something we should be, we should look into. Could we put that, do some investigation in establishing ordinance to prohibit venomous snakes and vicious animals to be held in the city limits?
With that, do we know if Raleigh has done? Is that, do we know if Raleigh has done any tweaking of their ordinance since all of that happened, that we might be able to reach out to them and snag it?
They haven't passed anything yet.
They've not?
No.
We'd certainly reach out and then see what research that they have done.
Okay.
Save us from reinventing the wheel.
Great. And if I recall correctly, I'm thinking that I did some research several years ago and it might be Seattle, Washington, believe it or not. I'm sure there's probably somebody closer, but at that time, Seattle had some interesting things with respect to dogs, vicious dogs. So I might see if I can find that and figure that.
That's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Bridges?
No.
Commissioner Toby?
No, I think I've said enough. Thank you.
And Commissioner Gilry?
No.
Okay. And with that, Mr. Thornton, is there anything you would like to add?
Just a couple of things real quick. Got a map that was provided to you by staff. Take a look at that. Very interesting. Paints a picture. If you have any questions about it, feel free to give me a call and we'll be glad to discuss. But if you can see from that visual, just what's going on in Oxford. I don't know that people fully understand and realize the scope of what's about to take place here over the next few years. We'll also let you know that we are still, at this moment, planning for the fifteenth annual Hot Sauce Festival. We continue to work on that every day in preparation for that on September the eleventh, I believe. I might say that wrong. I believe it's September the eleventh. We, of course, are continuing to monitor recommendations coming down from the CDC and the Governor's Office. If anything changes, we'll, we'll position ourselves as quickly as we possibly can in order to accommodate that. But for right now, it is still a gun. We continue to work on that every day to make that as good an event as we can possibly make it and a safe one as well.
Are you staying in contact with our health director about that as well? Or can you just...
I'm sure we can. I don't know that the county health director is gonna do anything different than the CDC or the State Health Department or the governor, but unless the county declares some state of emergency and grants additional powers. But we'll certainly take any and all pertinent and appropriate professional advice that we can get.
That would be wonderful. Thank you very much. Okay. Mr. Turney?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Toby. Any discussion? Okay. Everybody be safe and sound and thank you for your attention tonight.